This conference will now be recorded.
We're going to open this meeting tonight. We lost a dear friend last week, truly Collins. Some of us knew her, knew her well. Probably the one that had the biggest impact was Arlene. Arlene, you want to give a little narrative about your relationship with?
Oh, you don't have a one minute? No, Shirley, she worked for the city forty-three years. And she was, started out as a coworker, went to law. And then we went to mentoring. And then she went to friends and. She was awesome. She loved to that. We talked about it all the time. And she, that was evident. She served on so many boards at the state level. And wherever she went, I was always there. She made sure she interviewed. And I got to know all of them as well. She was on the MML. She was on the loggers board. She was on a consolidated healthcare board. She served for Wheelsman Wheels. She served on community council. Served on many committees through the church. And she's just going to be very good. And I got to thinking, we were both hired under Rob Beaver, who was city clerk at the time. And I added up all those years, hundred and thirteen years, three of us served.
Wow.
She'll be really missed because we called each other almost once a week.
Up until the last couple weeks.
Oh, yes, I got to visit with her many times. But she was ready. She treated well.
Yeah, she was a true ambassador for the city of Missouri.
She was. She was an ambassador. And wherever she went, she talked about today. She was in the international city clerk. And then they didn't have the central clerks then. Then when the central clerks came, she joined that. And she was a member on each position of that board. Just everywhere she goes, she wanted to serve and loved her city very well.
She did. She honestly prayed it well.
Yes, she did. She did. She, her philosophy was you start training your replacement the day you start. And she truly did that. And I've tried to mentor her that as well.
Thanks, Arlene. I know it's been a difficult week for you. I think the other person that had any, Chief Harold had a little bit of experience with her.
Most of my experience was not to lose her. But Arlene is right. She definitely would believe her in cities today. But if you would call her a question or stop by here and had some kind of question dealing with anything going on as far as, you know, city politics, she didn't have to look it up. She could just about quote it verbatim and you could just about bet she had it right. She was kind of a, you didn't want to cross. But, because she was usually right. But she wasn't a nice lady. And, you know, Rodney was the city's officer, her nephew's son for a long time. That family spent a lot of time in with the cities today, that's what all of them thought.
I think Rodney was really involved in that, their program. Chief, thank you. Anyone else would like to make a comment or? Welcome to come up. That means we're getting old. Everybody's so young out there. So we'll call this meeting to order. We'll just, and we'll have a moment of reflection for Charlie tonight. Arlene, go ahead, please.
Lehman?
Here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Here.
And Bliss?
Here.
And so tonight, we have a special award for retirement of family owner. We chief served with director of the library for nineteen years. I said a minute ago, there were eighteen. You corrected me very quickly. So can I come on up? First of all, can I, you know, I'd like you to say, reflect on your experience with the library and some highlights.
Okay. Uh, well.
Come up here and.
So everybody can hear me?
Yeah, please.
I have a loud voice. Okay, well, I guess probably my most challenging thing at the library was saving it from falling down. And it was my second Carnegie library to have fallen down. So I had experience. I had to build a new one in Brookville because we couldn't save it. But this one, we were able to save. And one point five million dollars later, you find a very safe, secure library building. So that was the highlight of my career.
Significant history to Sedalia.
Yes.
And it's always been a landmark.
The treasure.
Yep.
That's one of my favorite pictures. I was noticing that. And if you notice the public art in the front, that's the picture that got us the public art. Because we have a big bicycle in front with books on the seat. So it's one of my favorite pictures.
We appreciate your dedication to the library. And that's very, you know, I know that was not easy to come up with the money.
It was a challenge.
A decision for the city to make.
Exactly.
And it wasn't easy.
Yeah.
And I'm so happy we got it.
But the voters, sixty-one percent said, yes, they would help us though. That was a really big day as well.
And so they answer, you know, they understand.
They understand. And they wanted to save the library. And I appreciate that. Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome. And thanks. Don't be afraid to come around. We may need you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So we have need of motion to approve the amendments from July sixth meeting.
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. So public safety term. August, please. This is a unfinished business on this mobile food end of fire code. It's a second public.
Okay. This is, as you said, this is a section to adopt since the two thousand and eighteen international fire code. Since we have our fire chief here. If he could, hopefully elaborate on this inspection.
This was just a request of the council. And with the food truck ordinance, we have no ability to provide for fire inspections under the current code. So we had to adopt some sections from the newer fire code that would allow us to do fire inspections on the food. Not just food trucks, but any, I guess, mobile preparation type, the common purchase food trucks. And by adopting the sections that have been listed here in order on the ordinance itself, that allowed us to, like I said, conduct fire inspection, fire safety inspections. As we live at the six-type restaurant. There are some different stipulations, different requirements that this gives us if we're able to do that as part of their slide hunting requirements.
Thank you, Chief. So we're calling for a second reading and final passage?
Yes, I misspoke. Yes, a second reading and final passage. So we have any questions, counsel? Reading orders, please, August.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-eight. An ordinance submitting section twenty-four, fire prevention and protection, article two, fire prevention code, by adding and adopting sections three nineteen, one oh five point six, six oh seven, nine oh four point twelve, nine oh six point four, and nine oh one point six of the two thousand and eighteen international fire code into the code of ordinances of the city of Sedalia, Missouri, as sections twenty-four dash forty-two through twenty-four dash forty-seven.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Back.
Oppose?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-eight. An ordinance submitting chapter twenty-four, fire prevention and protection, article two, fire prevention code, by adding and adopting sections three nineteen, one oh five point six, six oh seven, nine oh four point twelve, nine oh six point four, and nine oh six point six of the two thousand and eighteen international fire code into the code of ordinances of the city of Sedalia, Missouri, as sections twenty-four dash forty-two through twenty-four dash forty-seven.
Final passage.
Second. All in call, please?
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. We have two amendments that we need to approve, says the vice recommission, and I'm only. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? I oppose. Finance administration, Chief Bliss?
Uh, Dawn's got the first thing. I think we've got a booklet that she passed out on the fire fund, retirement fund. Where'd you go? Oh, there she is. She's so big. I'm on the speedway. I'm sorry. Six pro, Arlene, you know. I'm glad you're so good. I'm in trouble now. Wobbly, wobbly.
That's how your house gets on fire today.
They had to go get my dad years ago. Or Rodney Fennell's route, I could still get tech on him too. They've served me well. They'll still come get me. Dawn, are you up? Will you please get up here before I rush?
You will never leave that now.
I didn't mean to.
I was hiding.
I was looking for it.
Okay, as you can see, it's good news again this month. Sales tax for the month is up eight point five percent over the prior month. Without consideration of the park additional eight, eight cent sales tax, we would still be at seven point eight four percent for the month. Use taxes down slightly. Franchise tax up twelve point six percent. Transportation tax up sixty-two point seven percent for the month. And property tax collections are up seven point four percent for the month. Sales tax collections for the year are up seventeen point four percent so far this year. Without consideration of the park sales tax would be fourteen point seven three percent. Still very nice. Use taxes down fourteen percent year to date. If you take park use tax out of there, it would be fourteen point two six percent. So not, not a big difference. Franchise taxes are up thirteen point six percent for the year, pretty consistent with the month. Transportation taxes are up twenty-nine point three percent. And property taxes are up thirty point two percent for the year. All in all, amazing news yet again.
What's the, what's the main contributor to the transportation tax being sixty-two percent? Growth of sixty-two percent.
My personal opinion is that is a shot in the dark when people happen to purchase automobiles. That, I think that's the major contributing factor is sales tax on vehicles. Last year at this time, COVID, I doubt anybody was taking any risks. World was kind of still shut down a little bit. And people still leery of what's going to happen. So be my thoughts.
Gas tax is also up because of last year at this time they were in COVID.
Okay.
And the gas tax is, well, all of these taxes.
Yes.
We don't get it directly as far as what's sold here. It's a, it's a, it's a basically a funding formula based off of the state toll.
Right.
So, you know, the, during the shutdown last year with COVID statewide, basically people weren't traveling. They weren't buying gas. And so then now this year it's back more and more. And then the other piece of car sales.
Car sales.
Also, just a quick question in regard to Wayfair, which is the internet. I'm going to call it the internet taxes won't come to twenty twenty-three. But it's my understanding it's going to be filed or at least it'll show up underneath the use tax. Is that correct?
I don't know the answer to that. Okay.
Well, our, that use tax, it's kind of a little indicator of what we've got going on around here. Will it be kept separate in that account or none? Do we just, you know? I mean, we'll have access to. Dispute. Well, we'll have access to see the different vendors. But we won't know how much of it's under the Wayfair and how much of it's total. Okay. You know what I mean? I mean, other than looking at the vendors, I mean, if we know that they're not somebody that's here in town, we won't interest them. It'd be the only way we'd know.
And why don't you give the consistency, some clarity of what?
Okay. Wayfair is named after the Supreme Court's case on sales tax on businesses that are not, don't have locations in the state. It was Wayfair versus South Dakota?
Yes.
That the Supreme Court basically ruled that previously they had to have what they called nexus or a connection to the state before the state could require them to collect sales tax or use tax in the state of Missouri. Or anywhere, because that was a national ruling. What South Dakota did is they came up with a law that said if they had over a hundred thousand dollars worth of sales within the state, then that, that was considered a nexus or a connection, a large enough connection to the state, that they would have nexus or they would have, basically be subject to the use tax. And that was taken all the way to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court upheld the South Dakota's rule. So now that allowed the rest of the states to kind of jump on board and come up with their own or adopt laws similar to what South Dakota did to be able to collect sales tax on internet sales. And I think Missouri was the last one, right?
Yes.
Last or near last.
Yes. There might be one other, but we were one of two last ones for a while. And I think the other one passed it before we did. So anyway, we were the last ones to pick it up. And just went through the state legislature and was passed. And the governor signed it.
Signed it last month, the month before?
Yeah, it's been very recent.
Very.
And, but it doesn't take effect till twenty, January one of two thousand and twenty-three. And that was really to give the state time to get, one of the things that they have to do is get data to the statewide database of what all of the different sales tax rates are for all the local locality. And then, and then also the businesses to be aware of it and get their data. Are we done either?
Any questions?
Thank you for bringing the good news. Keep it up. I'm sorry.
So, so.
So this is just for our information?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I misspoke. Uh, second thing is Bothwell Regional Health Center has to replace their linear accelerator. Let me get to that. Bothwell utilizes a linear accelerator for life-saving treatments of cancer patients. This piece of equipment has aged to the point of not being reliable. Management of the hospital, including the medical staff, have researched and sourced a replacement. The cost of the equipment and the building modifications will be approximately two and a half million dollars. A transition plan during the downtime has been developed to coordinate with Fitzgibbon Hospital in Marshall. They also happen to be in the process of replacing their equipment. So Bothwell patients will be treated on their equipment until the, until the new accelerator here is up and running. Then we will treat the Fitzgibbon patients while their accelerators being replaced. Bothwell Board of Trustees have reviewed this plan and recommends counsel authorize the issuance of debt to fund this important project for the care of cancer patients in our community. In accordance with our code of ordinances, only revenues of the hospital will be available for repayment of this debt.
So we'll need. Right, question? It says here that the city cannot be liable for claims or entitlements. So if they was to miss a payment or something, the city wouldn't be liable for that?
That's correct. The, by, by our code of ordinances, only hospital revenues can be used to pay hospital debt. So, and that will be written into the documents as well. It's, it, that, you know, they can't come back on the city other, you know, other than any of the assets of Bothwell Hospital or revenues.
All right, so even if the city owned hospital, we still would be responsible for this debt?
That's correct. I mean, we're responsible to the extent of the revenues and assets of the hospital, but not taxpayer dollars.
Thanks, sir. Call for the orders. Any other questions? Any other questions? Henry, do you want to say something?
How's the hospital doing financially? How's the hospital doing financially?
Better, but that's relative. I'm trying to remember the, the number. They are, of course, their, their year end was May thirty-first. And they had about a two million, two and a half million dollar loss, somewhere between there, which is again, much better. We are still looking at as, as far as, you know, really all of that loss was really COVID related. And so we still have the opportunity to apply for grants that possibly will, will, certainly there's enough there that would make up more than the loss. Of the nature of grants, we don't know what we'll receive and when we'll receive. So this, this piece of equipment and, and the, I'm going to say he and her, the relationship, we're replacing, big dollar amounts. This is, this particular piece is key for our cancer treatment. We need it desperately. So this is, and obviously it's something we just can't sit there and debate about. We're going to be in that business. And from a pure financial standpoint, this piece of equipment actually does pay for it. So unlike many of the things that the hospital does.
And, you know, I mean, here you talk about cancer and cancer is a moneymaker, but this is. Any other questions? Reading orders, please, Arlene?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh three. An ordinance to the city of Sedalia, Missouri, authorizing Bothwell Regional Health Center to seek financing to replace the linear accelerator at the hospital.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor? I. Oppose?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh three. An ordinance to the city of Sedalia, Missouri, authorizing Bothwell Regional Health Center to seek funding or financing to replace the linear accelerator at the hospital.
Final passage.
Second. All in call, please?
Okay, Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
All in favor?
Second, or third item for finance and administration. As a rather routine housekeeping item, the personnel department has identified records that have met retention requirements and requests authorization to dispose of them. Staff recommends this approval.
So moved? Motion to approve?
Second. All in favor? I oppose.
During the budget development process for two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year, staff made a recommendation and the council encouraged to stop paying dues to Pioneer Trails Regional Planning Commission. The decision was based on the belief that our voice was not being heard and thereby our interests were not being represented in this organization. Hence, the costs of the dues were simply not justified by the benefits derived. Over the past eighteen months, the leadership of the, and the representatives have changed. The director approached us and requested a chance to show that they have changed. And he would appreciate our representation in the regional planning process. The state, and particularly the Department of Transportation, MoDOT, looked to these regional planning commissions to coordinate the planning efforts. Additionally, some grants are only made available through the Regional Planning Commission. Their dues are on a semi-annual basis. So I recommend we try again to get better representation of our priorities for six months. If at the end of the six months, we feel we are getting good representation, we can continue. On the other hand, if the benefits do not justify the cost, we'll drop out again. Therefore, we're looking for, we recommend a budget amendment to add a half-year's dues to the PTRC for three thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
I'm just, I'm going to ask some clarity.
Yeah. Would you, would you share your conversations or if you feel like it, that you had within the director? Yeah, pretty much. Because I put in the admin memo is, you know, his conversation was, he assured me that the, that, well, first of all, he has changed. He is, they have a new executive director. And then the, the folks that are serving on the PAC committee, the Transportation Advisory Council, have changed. And that they, they believe that the, that our voice would be better heard and that he would really appreciate our involvement to ensure that it was heard. I was very blunt with him and, and said that, you know, I was skeptical. And that, you know, that the proof's in the pudding. So ultimately, I told him I would bring this to counsel and, and recommend a six-month trial and give him the opportunity to prove that he really has changed and that our voice will be heard and, and our priorities will be given consideration, if you will. Does that make sense? Where is he from? Well, he offices out of Concordia. So that's where, that's where the Regional Planning Commission offices.
In the next six months, what items do you think we'll utilize Pioneer Trails for?
Well, yeah, the biggest thing that they do is that, from my perspective, is they basically accumulate the regional planning for transportation. And that Transportation Advisory Council. And so through the representation of the Transportation Advisory Council, go through the Regional Planning Commission. That Regional Planning Commission then communicates with MoDOT. And that's really what sets the priorities for the region as far as what, what transportation items for MoDOT. And then, and then that gets mixed in with everybody else's, the other, how many regional planning? President, you know how many regional planning commissions there are in somewhere around there for the whole state? And then that's, that's kind of how it pyramids up to what, what MoDOT's budget is and what their priorities statewide. So, and that's where frankly, my, my feeling was is, you know, what we saw as priorities for the city were being ignored completely. And so it's like, we're not going to get any worse representation by not, not going in and we save seven, six hundred dollars a year. So that's the reason why I recommended dropping out. He's assured me that has changed and so we'll see. Does that make sense?
I think so.
So we budgeted this year our share, or what we thought was our share at limit in.
Oh, yes.
In thirty seconds, try to get that. So let's, let's pull the chain a little bit on that and say, hey, this is one good way. If you can show us that you can get us some traction on this. Yeah, and we did discuss directly with MoDOT that. And it is on their list, but it's down their list as far as priorities. It is. He did share with me. It is, um, he did share with me, the executive director of the Regional Planning Commission did share with me what they've listed as their priorities, uh, currently. And it is on their list of priorities, but, uh, again, it's, it's down the list, so.
So is it fair to ask them to try to, it's, I mean, maybe not this year, but next year, get it up to the point where we get it?
And keep us informed and. Uh, my comment to him is, is our two highest priorities are, uh, first of all, the thirty-second street intersection and then the ramps on, uh, Main to, yeah, I remember that. And, uh, so that's.
Those were the momentary process in February or?
I remember that part. Uh, Main and sixty-five was the most expensive.
Yes, yeah. And we, yeah, and I'm, wanna say that they've put a price tag of seven and a half million and I think that's probably why, that's probably why.
Who will be, uh, representing us on the PAC committee?
Uh, well, the PAC committee is, that's where the, the issue is, is, uh, uh, the PAC committee is organized by the county. And so the county gets to decide who the representatives are from now. They've always allowed us to have one member from the city on that, on the PAC committee for, at its count. Uh, so we will approach them, uh, from what I understand, Israel Bayes, uh, Eastern Commissioner, uh, is the, uh, is the representative, our chair in the PAC committee right now. Um, but as far as representation on the, the Regional Planning Commission, I agree that if we did this, then I would be the representative. And that's what he requests.
This calls for a resolution, I think, and?
Yeah, no, no.
A call for an ordinance?
Correct. Any other questions? Only read the resolution.
Resolution nineteen thirty-two. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri, authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year relating to Pioneer Trails Regional Planning Commission membership dues.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll make it one, please, read the ordinance.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash oh, one oh four. An ordinance permitting the budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year relating to Pioneer Trails Regional Planning Commission membership dues.
Second reading.
Second.
Call, please?
All in favor?
All in favor, too. I wish I'd known it myself.
That's okay.
Alright.
Aye.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh four. An ordinance permitting the budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year relating to Pioneer Trails Regional Planning Commission membership dues.
Final passage.
Call, please?
Who made the second?
I did.
Thank you. Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor, Chairman of the Senate?
Um, we'll have a fire pension option presentation.
Yeah. Okay. Um, basically, what we, the purpose for this presentation, uh, for tonight is, is to go through in, in a work session type format to review and the council's direction on, uh, some options that we have for the fire department, uh, retirement plan. Uh, some of the reasons why we are, we are looking at this or bringing this forward is, is, uh, first of all, the fund performance or the past performance. And, uh, and that brings into the question of sustainability, and we'll go through that in more detail through this presentation. Also, the, uh, the management of the fund, uh, creates a fiduciary liability for the, the trustees on the plan. And so again, we wanna, wanna talk through that and address that. We've also had a request from employees, um, to, for us to look at this and, and investigate the alternative. Um, also, uh, from my perspective, as, as the, uh, uh, from the employer's perspective, is, is whether or not the current plan fully meets or if there are better options for, to meet the objectives of what, why we have a defined benefit plan in the first place, so. With that, uh, looking at the current plan or the current, uh, retirement plan is, uh, it's set by ordinance. It's, uh, was effective in nineteen forty-six. The plan year is, is the same as our, our fiscal year of March thirty-first. The plan eligibility is, is any active service in the Sedalia Fire Department. So all of our firefighters or all of our fire department employees. It's administered by a, uh, Board of Trustees, uh, which is the Fire, Firefighters Retirement Fund Fund Board of Trustees, which is set by ordinance how that, um, uh, that board is, is made up. And by their position, the mayor, the city clerk, the fire chief, and the finance director serve as members on the board. And then, um, the, uh, three employees of the fire department are elected by the membership of the, of the fire, of the participants. And then, um, there is also an elected member of the, or, um, retired, uh, member of the department. And then, again, I have the note there that, uh, uh, by serving on this board, they take on a fiduciary, uh, responsibility. And with that responsibility, uh, comes a liability. Now, the city covers that liability as through insurance, but they still have that liability and can be sued personally, uh, for their actions. Um, so just, again, wanted to point that out. Uh, annual actuarial study is performed by McLeod and Associates, is who we currently contract with to perform the actuary study. And then the current investment manager, or has been for several years, is Meritage Portfolio. The current status is, is it's a funded status at sixty-four percent. Or sixty-four percent of the future, uh, promises, if you will, are currently in the account. And that's basically, uh, the, what the actuary does is that they go through and they use a discount rate and say, okay, assuming all of, uh, when these people will retire and how long they will draw retirement and those kinds of things. And then they discount that back to the present value, uh, using that discount rate. And then come up with, uh, and then compare that to the current value of the assets or the current amount of funds that are in, in the investment. And that comes up to the sixty-four percent. Or there's four million, uh, four point one million dollars worth of more liabilities out there than what the, uh, uh, current assets are. And if you look at that from a trend standpoint, you can see the blue line there is the, um, uh, the funded ratio. And as you can see, it's going down and has been for the last ten years. Uh, you know, up and down a little bit, but the general trend line is that it's decreasing. And the, uh, unfunded liability has been increasing for the last ten years at a pretty alarming rate. The investment earnings assumption that they, the discount rate that I was talking about, they, uh, they, they assume that we will average seven percent per year return on all of our investments. And, uh, and then there in the graph, you can see what we've been actually, uh, earning for the last ten years. And over the last ten years, you can see consistently it's been below and the trend line is decreasing. And the trend line, uh, basically crossed the, uh, seven percent assumption in about twenty, uh, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, somewhere around in there. And also, just as a note there, the last five year, or the last two years, they use what they call a five-year smoothing when they're, uh, applying that discount rate because, um, or when they're computing the present value. Um, because of last year during COVID and those kinds of things, it, 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 uh, really dropped the interest rate. And so when they have those, those big, uh, fluctuations in interest or, uh, investment earnings, uh, then, uh, they reduce that. But, uh, keep in mind that the, uh, the measurement date was March thirty-first. So, uh, March thirty-first of twenty twenty, as you'll know, that's, that's when the market really got scared. So that's why you see that, that huge decline in, uh, in twenty twenty. But the, the trend line is still important and it's still, uh, below, uh, the average is still well below the discount rate. So what that causes is the, uh, the, or what they calculate is, is what we should put in there every year. And currently, it's at nineteen point two four percent of earnings or four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars a year. And again, if you look at the contribution amount in the blue line there, uh, going up, uh, uh, over the last, uh, five years, going up and, and consistently going up and on the trend line pretty steep, steep going up. And then, but then at the same time, the, uh, the unfunded liability again is, uh, continues to increase. So what that means is, is because we're not earning the amount of interest that they have, um, they have projected in their calculation, that means we're not putting in enough money, uh, to make up for that. So every year, we have to put in more money to make up for last year not earning the discounted rate. And, uh, and then they amortize the unfunded liability over a thirty-year amortization period. And so then we just keep adding to that amortization every year. And so then the unfunded liability, every time we miss, uh, uh, that interest rate or that earnings rate, every time we miss, that unfunded liability goes up and the contribution for next year goes up because we're gonna amortize another, another unfunded loss. So that's the, the reason why both of those are on a pretty steep incline. So that brings into question, at some point, um, you know, logic tells us that at some point, that's not gonna be sustainable. Uh, something has to change, uh, otherwise this is gonna outpace what we're gonna be able to afford. I'm sorry? I hit the wrong button here. Eric. So Loggers, by comparison, uh, if we look at, um, the big difference here in Loggers is, is they have eight billion with a B, uh, in assets over, spread over twelve hundred and seven, seven separate plans that they manage. So obviously, that, that's what they do. They manage pension funds. We don't. We are, uh, like, we are firefighters and, uh, finance directors and mayors and city clerks and, uh, city administrators trying to run, uh, run a pension plan. Um, it's administered by a Loggers Board of Trustees. That Board of Trustees is, is put together, first of all, uh, we get a vote. We get to elect delegates that go to their annual meeting. And those delegates then elect who the pension board trustees are. And then there's one, um, trustee that's appointed by the governor as a, to serve in a citizen's capacity. Um, under, and by comparison, I'll just, uh, look at our Sedalia general employees. We have, uh, both our general employee, well, we have our general employees, our police employees, and our library employees under three separate plans underneath, uh, Loggers. But just to compare for the general employees, uh, we've been in that since nineteen seventy-two. Our plan year again is March thirty-first. The plan eligibility is, uh, full-time employees of the city. And I think I messed that up. The plan year is actually February twenty-eighth, I think, for Loggers. Um, the general employee plan currently is at eighty-eight percent funded. The unfunded liability is one point seven million. And you can see there that by comparison, the two separate graphs, the funded stat, funded ratio is on a trend line that's increasing. And, uh, the unfunded liability is on a trend line that's a pretty steep decli, decline as opposed to, uh, our current fire pension plan, which again, has the opposite, uh, both of those trend lines where the funded status is going down and the unfunded liability is on a pretty steep incline. The current actuarial recommended contribution for our, uh, general employees is at sixteen point three percent. And again, doing the comparison of the two graphs, the, uh, blue line for the Loggers is going up, but it's going up at a, at a much slower pace, which is expected because, you know, every year, your, your wages go up a little bit. You, your wage inflation, if you will. And, uh, and so the, the amount of the contribution is really going up by, by virtue of that, of wages going up. And, uh, uh, the percentage of wages is staying relatively, relatively stable. While at the same time, the unfunded liability is going down. So, uh, we're, we're keeping up with our promises and, and making good on that going, going forward. Comparatively to the, the fire pension, which the, uh, contribution rate is going up at a much higher, higher rate, a higher, uh, uh, rate than what the wages are going up and the unfunded liability. And despite continuing to increase the, the contributions, it's still going up. So why are they going in opposite directions for sustainability? Um, first of all, the, uh, the, uh, are, really, it's, it comes down to just this. It's really the investment returns and how they're being managed. The current pension in, investment earnings assumption is seven percent. And in the blue line, you can see there that, uh, they, uh, consistently missed the seven percent. That's what we were talking about before. If the discount rate is based off of seven percent and they come up with that, uh, that actuarial recommended contribution based off of that seven percent, and then we don't earn it, you have an actuarial loss or next year, you gotta put in more money because of the compounding effect. Whereas on the, um, uh, Loggers investments, their assumption is seven point two five percent. Um, and in the, uh, kind of the gold line there, uh, you can see that their trend is about one, one and a half percent above what the fire department pension plan has been earning for the last, uh, is that about five years, ten years? Uh, over the last, last several years. Um, and so that really is, in a nutshell, the reason why these two plans are, are going in opposite directions as far as sustainability is just the simple fact of, uh, the, uh, they do a better job of hitting their discount rate than what we have been on the fire pension. And it's a higher discount rate, uh, to start with. So what options are available? Um, first of all, we had to make, we had to, uh, look at whether or not the fire department employees wanted to continue their current non-coverage by social security. The, uh, uh, cities are given the opportunity, if they have a, uh, a qualifying pension plan that covers our, uh, public safety employees, they can opt out of social security coverage. It's an all or nothing. All employees or no employees, uh, have, have to opt out. So what we did is, is to, to, to make sure or reaffirm where, where the employees wanted to be. Um, we first of all, had to have an election with, uh, coordinated by the Social Security Administration. First, council had to do a resolution, which we did, uh, about a year and a half ago. Uh, and basically, that resolution calls for this or gives the, the, authorizes the election and basically says that, that council would, uh, would go the direction if they opt, if they decided to change, then council would, would allow that change. After that authorization, we had to provide. After that authorization, we had to provide education to all of the employees as to what it would mean. We had to provide a hundred and fifty-day notice for the for the election and then and then hold the election. And just a note here, basically, you have to count only the affirmative vote. And so a if you don't cast a vote, it is in essence, is a no vote or a negative vote. The result of that election, we got that in February, I think, is about when we got that that those results back from the Social Security Administration. Or no, the election was in February, we got the results back, I think, May, somewhere around in there, April, May, somewhere where we get we got the results back. But overwhelmingly, they they chose to stay where they're at, which is not to have coverage by the Social Security Administration, Social Security. They do are they are still covered with Medicare. They just are not covered with Social Security. Therefore, the that allows under Loggers to for them for us to even look at or consider what they call the L-11 plan, which is effectively two and a half percent per service credit. And we'll go into that a little bit more here later. But currently, the the city employees, the general employees, the police and library are all covered under what they call L-6, which is equates to two percent per service credit. We then we also had to have an actuarial study performed by the the actuary that serves Loggers. And and that will tell us what it would cost if we did move. So the options that we looked at or that we had the the actuary look at is, first of all, a new hire-only option. This would be basically, we would freeze entry only into the into the fire pension. So nobody else can join the fire pension. Only the new employees would go into Loggers. The new employees, just like everybody else in Loggers, would have a vesting period of five years. If they leave within that five years, they they do not have any vested interest in the pension unless they go to another community, then those credits are transferable to another Loggers employer. But once they get to five years, you are vested in how many ever service credits you have times the the two percent or the two and a half percent, whichever case we are. The L-6 option is the two percent. The L-11 option is the two and a half. So basically, the way they work is is let's say you work 10 years, then you get 10 service credits times, let's say, two percent. So you would get 20% of your highest three-years wages, average wages over the last 10 years of your employment. So if you averaged $50,000 for the last three years, then you would get 20% or $10,000 a year for under Loggers. If I did the math right, let me check me. But under the L-11 plan, it would be two and a half percent. So in that case, if you'd served 10 years, you'd have 25% of your of your highest three-years wage. Make sense? Another option is to move all employees and to give them the current employees credit for their previous previous service up to towards their vesting. So you would enroll all new hires. And again, they would be subject to the five years. Once they start, they would be have to serve their their five years for their vesting. The current employees, though, would be transferred to Loggers. And then if they have five years or more, then they would be fully vested day one in vest in Loggers. So the first year, they'd get two and a half percent of their service credit and they'd be fully vested in that. The current plan then would be frozen and and the accrued benefits based off of where they are at the time of the transfer would be what they would get at at the time that they actually do retire. So let's say that they're vested at at, say, $10,000 right now, then they would keep that vesting and and be frozen in that. And that amount would then be available to them and when they get when they turn 55. Then they would start earning service credits under Loggers. And then when they actually do retire, they would get their Loggers benefit based off of that point forward to their to their retirement date. And so effectively, they would get two checks. That's basically what the fire or the pension, police pension would that's the path that we went down with them. And many of our police officers do draw two separate pensions. They have their their old legacy plan as well as the now what they're earning under Loggers. Again, we have the two options there, the two percent or the two and a half percent. We looked at and really ended up eliminating the possibility to do some and not all. This would be where new employees, again, would be enrolled into Loggers. And we would allow the current employees at their option to basically, for the purposes of the pension only, be terminated and rehired as a new employee. So then, being a new employee for the pension plan, they can start as just like everybody else or every other new employee in the Loggers, and they would be frozen or they'd have their accrued benefits under their under their legacy plan. This option does create what they call benefit impairment or discrepancy between what you've got the same same class of employees and one's getting this benefit and one's getting this benefit. And so that that starts looking like a discriminatory plan where we're where we're discriminating even though it was their option. The real problem with that becomes if if later down the road, we change one of the plan and Loggers will only let that allow that to be a one-time only option. So if we if we change one of those plans, then the employees like, well, if I'd have known you were going to change it, I would have made this make made a different decision. So it 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 causes us to kind of predict the future, which we can't do. And I've already looked at it from the standpoint of, well, we know that the current plan has something has to change, otherwise, it's going to become not sustainable at some point in the future. So I nor Loggers, neither one, recommend that we even consider this as an option. But did want to point out that we did look at it. And we did hear of a community that was doing taking that path. So from the actuary study, what they looked at, and this will have to be updated because these are old numbers now, but in 2019, when they looked at it for comparison sake, the contribution rate, if we adopted the L-6 for new employee buyer employees only, would have been 15.9%. Or under the L-11, which is again, the two and a half percent per service credit, would be 19.5, basically right on top of what we're contributing now in the in the the current fire pension plan. If we did the option for all fire members, fire employees only, and gave them prior service credit for the vesting option or vesting purposes, that would be 18.2% under the L-6 plan or 22 and a half percent under the L-11. And then, as you can see, we start off day one with an unfunded accrued liability. And that's why the contribution rate goes up because we have to amortize that. Because day one, you've got employees that are invested. So all of that prior vesting that you're giving them credit for creates an unfunded liability. And then that would be amortized. Make sense? Just to look at it, carrying out how that looks, you know, the 18.2% contribution, the unfunded liability that gets amortized and and carries forward through and they just did that as an example through 2019 through 2028. Same way with the L-11 benefit plan, the higher contribution rate, and then the amortization of the unfunded accrued liability. Okay. I tried to go through and take the take numbers out of the actuary plan and 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 try to do calculations and assumptions based off of, okay, where would these these employees and and where they would end up? And as you can see, basically, I started with the average employee that was in the first, sorry, I'm pointing at my screen instead of your screen. Yeah, there we go. I started with the average employee in 2020 or 2019, I guess, is when they actually did it. The average employee was at 37 and a half years, essentially 11 years of service credit and make them 40, almost 47,000. So backing into that, basically, they are the average age of the employee when they started was 26.6 and years to fully vet was 28.4. So if I look at the ratio or how the the current plan is calculated, they would be basically 38% vested in the current plan because the way it works is that you get one twenty-second of the of the of of the plan each year. Subject to, that would be 55. So if somebody enters at 21, they get one, what would be one thirty-fourth every year credit. If somebody enters at 30, what would be 32 or 33, then they get one twenty-second. So it's weird how that's calculated. So I did the calculation based off of that. The way the current plan works is that they have an index base that is based off of their benefits. And then you get 50% of the index base at the time that they retire. So it's at 2020, the index base is 50, 59, 529. Take 50% of that, multiply it times their vested of 38%, you come up with 11,424. So if if that employee left our service today, they would have that set in their guarantees to them at the point when they turn 55, they could start drawing 11,424 per year. I looked at carrying that employee out to where when they were age 55 or 2038, they would be have an N28.9, their payroll, assuming the average increase, I just took the current year's average employee, fire employee increase, compounded that over the the number of years to get 2038, they would be in effective in effect, making 87, 172. They would be they would be fully vested because they're at 55. And their index base, assuming that again, we can sustain that, the three percent escalator that they're currently doing, it would end up at their retirement benefit would be 50,672. If we would have backed clock up and said, well, we would have covered these employees under under Loggers, then at that point, they would have 84,018 under L-11 or 67,848 under, I'm sorry, I'm in a wrong call, 48,701 under the L-6 or 60,876. And if we considered right now, if we froze the plan and moved them to Loggers, then they would they would at 55, they would be able to have their guaranteed 11,424, which is what they're currently vested at, plus their Loggers benefit, which would have been the earnings, the service credits from 28.9 service years minus the 30, 10.9 for another 18 years. So their 18 years times the, in the case of L-6, would be two percent times their average salary for the last three years would have been 30,338. Or then to the L-11 at the two and a half percent. So when you add the two together, they would essentially get two checks. You add the two together, you get a you come up with 41,756 or 49,340, depending on which plan. And then that shows the difference. I would point out that, okay, even though it's a it's it's a little bit less under the Loggers or the combined deal than what their current deal is, again, we're assuming that that's sustainable. And then also, Loggers have a a deal where they give COLAs at every year if the plan is performed. And so even though they would start here, they could have more more retirement given to them in later years. But here's the real difference to me is if you carry that on out and assume that that employee stays till they're 60 instead of retiring at 55, at they're they were fully vested in the current plan at at 55, so they don't get any more vesting, but they do continue the the escalator of the three percent. So their plan would have went up to 58,743. On the other hand, if you turn back the clock and look at, okay, if they were under Loggers, they would have went up to 84. So if you do the vesting or the the frozen plan and then carry over into Loggers, Loggers now goes up to 57,541, assuming the two and a half. So their total goes up to 68,965. And actually, under the L-6 plan, we're close to the same amount. And under the L-11 plan, we're quite a bit above. If you carry them out all the way to 65, and then it actually goes up where the L-6 plan is better under Loggers than under their current plan. And the L-11 plan goes up quite a bit. It's quite a bit of a better benefit. So kind of this statement here, the longer they stay and the higher they promote, the greater the benefit under Loggers. Whereas under the current plan, it's 55, essentially, they're 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 done getting a better benefit for in essence. I mean, it does, the escalator does go up. But it doesn't pay any attention to their wage in in the current plan. It's not based at all on the wage. Then I also looked at, okay, if you look at the new employee, the new employee, if you assume they hired him at 21 and worked till they were, you know, started in here again. And then I looked at indexing the the current wage, the current wage scale, and looked at them promoting up through the ranks and and going through. And again, went looked at getting them to 10 years, which is where our current average employee is, this is where they would be. And then you look at them when they get to 55. Again, it's a little bit different under the L-11 plan. And then when they go to 60, though, it again, crosses over to where it's much better benefit under the Loggers. And then when you go to 65, it's again, a whole lot better benefit under Loggers and pretty close under the L-6 program. A lot of numbers there, a lot of jargon. I don't know if I lost everybody or not, but hopefully, that made a little bit of sense. So as far as going forward or additional information here, we would be able to, if we if we so chose, to begin the new hire and or the employee's enrollment, whichever option was chosen. option was chosen, um, we could start that now, that is one, an option available to us. If we enroll all employees in loggers and freeze the current plan, we can look at later, um, having loggers manage the current plan or the legacy plan, much like we did the police plan, um, the legacy police plan. Plan amendments would be necessary, though, with the most significant of those plan amendments, what it is, is that loggers can't administer a drop program. We currently have two employees that are enrolled in the drop program, and what the drop program, I'm sorry, is, is, um, uh, under the current plan, uh, an employee can elect to go into the drop program, and, uh, for the purposes of the pension plan, the employee has retired at the date that they enter the drop program. And then, but then they continue to get, to continue to be employed, so they're still getting their paycheck. The amount of the pension goes into a separate fund to them, much like a 401K or something like that, if, if you're familiar with the deferred compensation plan, goes into a separate fund that accumulates, and then, uh, when they actually do retire, they can take that as a lump sum, so it, it basically allows them to designate that they're going to retire up to five years early, re- retire but still draw a paycheck, put that in, that money back in, in savings essentially, uh, for when they do actually retire. But even with that, without that, or if we, even if we did the amendment to, uh, to, to get rid of the drop program, loggers couldn't look at taking over the management of that until at least twenty twenty two because they're that far behind in taking over plans from other communities. The, also, the actuarial information that we had all of this put together for us is only good for about one and a half to two years, so if we did want to move forward, we would have to get a new, uh, updated actuarial plan, which we would want to do anyway because we'd want, before we actually made the decision, we'd want to know what it, what it's going to cost and, and where, where the numbers are. With that, I would like to, um, uh, open it up for council's questions, discussion, direction on where you all think we want to go, and based on that direction, then my recommendation is, is where the next steps would be, we would have discussions with the employees to talk about, you know, the ins and outs of, of each of these, kind of go through those numbers that I threw together and, and vet those out and, and talk with them. We would also want to do the updated actuarial reports, and then, uh, and then at that point, once we get all of that information pulled together, is when we would actually make a decision, uh, with council, uh, as far as what, what the decision is, the, which way to go. So.
So we'll just take one more. Yep. Sorry. In, in the long run, I think we probably need to just, um, and, and, and I guess the temporary thing I want to say is, is it's my decision right now will be temporary is that we proceed to put everybody under loggers. But on the other hand, as we, as we look at this here, we also have some steps that we need to look at before we make that decision. I think that's, well, we, we have some discussions that need to have, of course, the, the reports, the last three things that are on here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Yeah.
To continue, everybody goes to loggers.
Yeah, I, I guess one of the, uh, kind of the thing that I failed to, to point out is, is that the, the way that that discounting works and the way that the investment and the compounding works, the longer you delay, uh, uh, doing something, the, the harder it is, the, the more costly it is, you know, because, you know, if you put one dollar in today and it compounded seven percent or seven and a quarter percent, then you've got one oh seven and a half, uh, uh, next year. But if you put that one dollar in today and it loses ten percent, then you only got ninety cents next year, and you got to put in way more, way more. So, um, again, just, just pointing out that the, the, uh, to use an old analogy that I hate, that, uh, the platform is burning, we got to do something.
Yeah. This is the last department citywide, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thomas? I see the need to move everybody over to the loggers. I, I'm interested in the, the employee discussions and with, with moving forward with this, just to hear any detailed concerns, but I, then again, like I said, I see the benefit of just moving us over to loggers quickly.
Henry, do you have any, uh, of the data on the, uh, post-retirement COLAs, what those have been historically?
Uh, I do not now, but I'm, I'm, I know we can get those.
Can I have one more question here? We, we've kind of talked this around here. We don't know the answer to this, at least I don't. Is there a mandatory retirement age?
No.
Okay. Are there many?
Yes. In, uh, listening to all of that, the only question that comes to my mind, or the only thing that comes to my mind is, what is it that the fire department employees want to do and go with the majority of whatever it is that they want to do? This is their money, this is their living, this is their life, so what do they want to do? And at the end of the day, does that work?
Yeah, and, and I, and I would offer, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't make my recommendations lightly, and, um, uh, and I, I have to, in my, my position, I think I have to look at both sides of that equation. And I, I think, and I was, you know, in, in all sincerity, I believe that the best thing for them is, 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 is to move to loggers because I cannot guarantee that, that we're going to be able to, to, to sustain what's currently happening. And so I think it's in their best interest, um, uh, to look at this and look at it from that, from, through that lens, is, is, can we, you know, can we really count on this, uh, the, uh, the, the retirement plan as it sits today to be able to be, continue to be funded? The other side of that, or the other side of my job, is, is also to look at it from the standpoint of the employer and what's in the best interest of the employer. And, and again, you know, uh, I, I, I see that as, you know, the loggers is first of all a sure bet and, and therefore, uh, uh, gives us a, a better way to control the cost to keep it from going out of, out of control. And then also, I think it's, uh, it, it accomplishes better objectives as far as from the employer's standpoint. The employer wants employees to stay longer, rather, you know, and that's the purpose of the benefit, is to get employees to stay with us longer, and, uh, and so the loggers' benefit does that, whereas the current plan does not. The other thing is, is from a recruitment standpoint, is that, um, uh, the loggers, again, is more stable, so it's, it's easier to get the employee to understand or the prospective employee to understand. And then loggers is portable, so if we're, uh, hiring people from, um, uh, another community, uh, then that, that happens to be covered by logger, which a lot of them are in, in the state, or, then it, it becomes a recruitment tool there. But I, you know, but I, I, I wholeheartedly understand what you're saying as far as the, the conversation with the employees, and, uh, you know, this is a, a very expensive benefit that we're providing for their benefit, so if they see it, don't see it as a benefit, we're wasting our money, you know what I mean? We want them to be on board with it, so that makes sense.
Uh, as far as the retainment, I mean, do we really have firemen that's sixty five and older?
We have one.
We have one.
Okay.
That's sixty four.
But we have, how many are over fifty five?
I wrote here, say, without going back and forth upwards.
Okay.
And, and listening to this last discussion, it kind of reminded me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it seemed to be part of a catalyst that we changed the PD over to loggers, was the sustainability of the account that they were currently under, and it looks like we're headed down that same road again.
Yeah, now, I, I will say, the police was in much worse position.
Correct.
It was thirty six percent or something like that refunded when we, when we changed it over, um, but, uh, uh, and, you know, but the fireman, the fireman is at the sixty four, so it's, it's better, but that just means, to me, again, the, you know, the platform's burning, if, you know, just looking at the trajectory, if we do something now, it's less expensive to do it now than it is will be if we let it get to that, that point.
The calculations for the death tax, the pension fund, it, it doesn't reflect any salary inflation, it's a constant, that's right.
Uh, I took that into consideration, and this, it's got inflation, it's got salary inflation.
But as, as the model that you set up, if you, that seven percent is not based on any inflation, is that?
Yeah, the current plan does, does not consider what their salary, it just considers this index, uh, that index, that indexed amount, which that base was set, I think it was reset in eighty two? Yeah, somewhere around in there, it was, it was reset, um, and then it's just three percent every year, and it's that same amount. So, um, it, it, it doesn't matter whether you retire at the, at the, at the bottom of the scale or the top of the scale, you're going to get the pension.
So then, obviously, you know, you're showing now that, that that sort of liabilities ever increases, and that means cities' categories is going to be increasing, and that's taking away from increasing in salaries.
By city, you mean taxpayer.
Or you.
By city, you mean taxpayer. I mean, ultimately, that's who we as council are responsible to, is the taxpayer.
The benefit could be considered what rightfully to the employees would increase salary as opposed to trying to sustain and some kind of like that.
Yeah, you're correct. Uh, basically, we're four point one million dollars behind now, so that's four point one million dollars that we'd have to put in today, uh, to, to make up for previous promises that have already been made. That's not, and then if that continues, then we're getting further and further behind, and that four point one million dollars is less that we've got available to give them weight, and I think that's the point you're making.
Correct. And another, I, you know, I, I think comparable cities that have been, have a similar fire pension fund that's gone to loggers programs.
Uh, I, I don't know, I don't, um, I know our experience, I don't, I don't know what others have, have moved. I mean, I can look at the, I, I see the loggers' overall report.
But you mentioned that, that, that loggers is many of the charges.
Yeah.
Paying their structure.
Yeah, there's.
Those death taxes would be fire.
Yeah, right now, they have eight billion in assets, and they're covering twelve hundred and seven separate funds, and that was off of their last report. And, and we have eight million in assets that we're trying for, I think.
Yeah.
A little bit more, so that's another point. Loggers, you can get a lot better investment, get a lot better investors when you're managing an eight billion dollar fund, and we're trying to manage something that's a hundred or a thousand times smaller.
Yeah.
Uh, and there's one slide that really, I guess, if you want to hear my two cents worth, just the unfunded liabilities, one's declining, one of the two, there's one slide that you had there that's got the, the two funds, the loggers and our fire pension fund, well, that dotted orange line, that unfunded liability's going up with the fire pension fund. We've proved over ten years, we don't need to be in the pension business. We, we, for the benefit of the firemen, for the benefit of people's failure, taxpayers, we probably, at least with this presentation, it indicates to me that we need to get in with loggers, and then I think I heard you say that if we do that, I think one of the slides said that they will take our eight billion dollars after a period of time and manage that, right? So now, the benefit for those people that are going to take the partial check from the fire pension fund and then be in loggers for part of their benefit too, the two check people, their eight million is being managed in a better way probably too going forward, and loggers has a COLA. Well. And, and. They would still be managed separately, though. Right, but, but the portion of their loggers now. Yeah, the loggers portion. They, they have opportunity for COLA, which I've been in an unfunded, uh, in a, defined benefits plan since two thousand and nine, and I can tell you, you don't get a cost linked adjustment every year, but it substantially changed my income, uh, in ten years, approximately eleven years. Well, it's, it's a, it's a good benefit, so to, to me, some type of movement towards loggers makes a lot of sense for the firemen and for the community. But we, it, I, I wouldn't be attracted to come to work for a city of failure if you say, well, we've got a fire pension fund here, but it's an unsustainable, it's an unsustainable promise, basically, right, for new loggers. Yeah, now, I, I don't want to mislead anybody, we still have to make up that, so we're still going to have to, on top of whatever we do going forward. We're still got four million dollar. Yeah, we still got to make up that four million dollars somewhere, which we're going to have to do either way. Which loggers will help us? Yeah, assuming we get a better rate of return, which history tells us we would under loggers, then we can make it up faster. I'm, I'm guessing in a couple of years, loggers is going to, in actuarial, they're going to come to us and say, hey, you're going to need to contribute this amount annually, budget, whatever looks to allow us budgeting.
So we do that with places.
Yeah, yeah. And there's another reason, I guess, for the employees to push for loggers, is if council agrees to go into loggers, loggers' rules are no questions asked, we come up with the actuary request, recommended amount, and you will make that contribution. Council has no, no further, uh, you can't say, well, no, we're, we, we don't want to make it this year, we'll, we'll double it next. I don't, I don't want to not. Yeah, I know. But it's. Not sustain a promise we've already made, but we're damaging, doing a damage fidelity. Yeah. Four million dollars is four million dollars, we're going to have to make that up. We, we're, we're already up against. I agree. And I don't have any problem with loggers coming in and saying, hey, I say that, I may be eating my words in here too, but.
Would this pass over?
Yeah.
It's because of what a platform would take care of. I'm tired. I'm sorry. Tom Ross?
I want to see him, going to loggers. I don't, I don't understand why, uh, our firemen didn't go with, with the police department's loggers years ago, if it's, that's already happened.
I, I started to ask that question too, but we can't change.
Well, you can't change it.
Yeah. So we'll pursue this. Uh, where's the fire?
Can we hear from the team? Would you comment, say?
I really don't know that I'm educated enough on this process. I do sit on the pension.
Can we hear from the team? Would you comment, sir?
I really don't know that I'm educated enough on this process. I do sit on the pension board as a fire chief, and we spend a lot of money every year in actuarials, and, and what we pay, uh, it makes me sick about something every quarter we send a check to meritize for what it costs, that's advantage of our money.
And last, last year, they got just point zero three, point zero zero three percent, I think, if I did the math right.
And I, you know, I mean, Harley probably hasn't been a great, but we, we send them a lot of money every year for the portfolio of money, to manage our money.
Quarterly, it's, uh, around ten thousand.
And that's painful.
And as your sum grows, and it grows as well.
So, those are things that we wouldn't be paying out anymore, because loggers would be managing that ton, and so, that's money that actually, if we go in, that we won't back out. But I'm just, the rest is, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of questions that the membership has, of what the benefits will be, what the change will affect. Um, one of the things I think that's attractive is, uh, we have these, these are firefighters who, uh, are moving up the, through the ranks motions that affects your, you know, your pension. Uh, right now, the firefighter that chooses to stay running the back step, if you wanna call it as a firefighter, makes the same pension as I will when I retire. So, there, in that aspect, instead of they to, to study and, and progress, that's not their free pension, because you can make as much money coming in thirty, forty hours and going home, and if you make an effort to, to advance his way. So, that's what is benefit. One other thing is, the two last, two new hires, we hired back three months ago, both of them came from the department. Um, and I can see that we've had several people hired in the last few years that come from departments that have loggers, uh, that were in their pension, and when they left, they got paid out because we're not, I think, back in the seventies, when I left Marshall to come here, I mean, we were kept in departments with loggers, and they paid, you know, I had three years towards the pension that I lost, but today, as far as part of the loggers, yeah, if we had moved to loggers, you might, I would've had three years towards my pension that I would've given up on last year. So, I think that is something we can use to recruit to as well. But, you know, there's a lot of information, we're just gonna have to be, you know, we have to see what best everybody. I mean, this probably will have no effect on my pension, because plus time, you know, we get to do some point where loggers come in, so that, uh, it's probably important to me. But there's forty-two other people that have to affect their life.
Chief Harold was one, but two, firefights and seven, in the drop, in the drop program.
So, would I like to add this twenty years ago? I believe it. I've had some discussions with Mr. Shaw, we just discussed like one day, my pension would be a tremendous lot better than what I'm gonna be living on right now. It would be a lot better.
Now, let me hear the loggers.
Yeah, okay, so, I think the next step is, is, um, uh, going out and meeting with the employees, get those discussions started, and then we will also, um, work with, uh, loggers to, to, uh, schedule another actuarial report, get in the queue for, for that going forward, and then we'll-
So, you think, uh, the government's, with our large, they're probably two years out?
Uh, no, we're probably, as far as, uh, a decision, as far as which way to go, is probably six months. Uh, but, but before they can manage the plan, it would be two years out, so. But, yeah, I think probably six months for a decision. Uh, I don't know how long that will take them to do another actuary report, but, um, that gives us time too to go out and talk to the employees. Again, we don't, um, we don't want them to feel like we're shoving something down their throat, but, uh, uh, we want them to understand what we're looking at and why. Okay?
Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thomas Hult, Public Works.
All right, the five items I have tonight, the first one is a tender agreement. Last fall, the contractor working on the water main replacement on a third and engineer street, Blue Nile Contractors defaulted on the agreement. Thankfully, we had a performance bond in place, and since staff have been working diligently with the authority to negotiate a settlement. The authority has been able to secure a placement contractor for us in Radmacher Brothers Excavating Company, and they have stepped in to complete the project. The cost of them to complete the contract is sixty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars more than what the remaining, than what was remaining under the original agreement. Therefore, in accordance with the negotiated tender agreement, the authority will have reimbursed the city for the extra costs incurred from the lack of performance of Blue Nile Contractors.
Any council discussion? That comes from beyond this point now. Yeah, that's new contractors, John, I read that.
And hearing from staff from the public works department, the Radmacher Company, their, their quality of work is quite substantially better, too.
Harley, read your orders, please.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh five. An ordinance authorizing a tender agreement relating to the twenty eighteen Water System Improvement Contract Number Four.
Second reading, second.
All good.
Aye.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh five. An ordinance authorizing a tender agreement relating to the twenty eighteen Water System Improvement Contract Number Four.
Final passage.
Pro Paul, please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor?
Second item, second item I have tonight is an approval of contract that Centos provide uniform services for our public works employees.
Any council discussion? Harley, read your orders, please.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh six. An ordinance authorizing an agreement bound between the cities of Todaya, Missouri, and Centos for the purchase of uniforms for the public works department.
Second reading?
Second. All good.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh six. An ordinance authorizing an agreement bound between the cities of Todaya, Missouri, and Centos for the purchase of uniforms for the public works department.
Final passage?
Second.
Pro Paul, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
All in favor?
Third item I have tonight is a change order. In connection with our water main replacement projects, Eminem Excavating did not install a tee and plug on a portion of the project they worked on that would allow Radmacher Brothers Excavating connect, to connect their part of the project. So, staff recommends adding a change order to the Radmacher contract for the extra costs associated with doing a live tap on this line to create the loop as designed. Note that we will not pay Eminem Excavating for the pieces they did not install.
Any council discussion? Final back, let us see new contractor.
Public Works Director Audrey, did they give any cause Eminem as to why they didn't install the tee and plug?
Any other discussions? Harley, read your orders, please.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh seven. An ordinance authorizing change order number one for the tee and live tap of water main.
Second reading.
All good.
Aye. All right.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh seven. An ordinance authorizing change order number one for the tee and live tap of water main.
Final passage, second.
Pro Paul, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor?
Fourth item I have tonight is another change order. Uh, the portion of the water main replacement project in the area of Warren and Third Street is nearing completion. As is customary in these con, in these types of contracts, we will allow for a final adjustment to the scope of actual qualities of pipe, valves, fitting, et cetera, installed. In this case, the overall quantity adjustment for the estimates in this original contract scope results in a net decrease of ten thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, bringing the total contract four hundred and ninety-four dollars, two hundred and twenty, four hundred and, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-six.
Any council discussion? Harley, read your orders, please.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh eight. An ordinance authorizing change order number one for a deduction in cost resulting from adjustments made during the construction of the Third Street and Warren Avenue Water Main Replacement.
Second.
All good.
Aye.
Close?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh eight. An ordinance authorizing change order number one for a deduction in cost resulting from adjustments made during the construction of the Third Street and Warren Avenue Water Main Replacement.
Final passage?
Second.
Pro Paul, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
All in favor?
The fifth and final item I have tonight, and I think it's gonna be a quite beneficial item, uh, all, 'cause it can be used just across the board in, in all of our departments, is that our street department uses a plotter in making street signs. Being able to produce these signs in-house is more efficient, timely, and cost-effective. This equipment is at the end of its useful life and starting to fail, and replacement was not anticipated in the budget as a capital expenditure. However, there is room in the current appropriations for street and construction supplies relating to dysfunction. Therefore, staff recommends moving nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars from the street supplies line item in the budget to capital equipment line. Like I said earlier, that this new equipment will have increased capabilities and will also assist us in our branding effort. This plotter, um, can make signs about four and a half feet wide by thirteen and a half feet long. So, we're gonna see quite, we're gonna be able to see quite a benefit out of this. I believe, yes, we're also able to buy all these signs, yeah.
Any council discussion? Read your orders, please.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh nine. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two regarding purchase of a plotter slash printer for street signs.
Second reading?
Second.
All good.
Aye.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one oh nine. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two regarding purchase of a plotter slash printer for street signs.
Final passage, second.
Pro Paul, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
All in favor?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Community Development, Development Director, please.
There's one item on the agenda, it's in relation to preliminary plat- filing fees. Uh, it's in section fifty-two, thirty-three of our Code of Ordinances. Uh, Community Development Director Simmons, if you could take us through these, uh, changes to that.
I would be glad to. Good evening. Um, if, if you'll recall, council held a public hearing on this issue, and we needed to go back to planning and zoning for a recommendation to council, uh, as it affects the, the section fifty-two. And if you'll recall, fifty-two, thirty-three, in the language of the body of our Code of Ordinances, sets the fees at twenty-five dollars for each subdivision plot, no more than two hundred dollars. But if you go over into our fee schedule, it shows us that we do twenty-five dollars per lot with a minimum of two hundred dollars and a maximum of fifteen hundred dollars. So, what this change does is it effectively removes the fee numbers from the body of the ordinances and moves them into the fee code section, um, which makes it easier to, to adopt and change fee numbers over the years, as well as cleans up the language so that we are all sure when we look through the books that it's twenty-five dollars per lot on a preliminary plat fee, minimum of two hundred dollars, and again, the maximum fee is fifteen hundred dollars. So, those are actually scalable to the size of the land and the number of people you're affecting with this change in the platting. So, that's what caused that. Uh, Planning and Zoning last Wednesday, uh, gave a favorable recommendation to make this change to city council with a vote of nine, four, and one absent. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Read your orders, please.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one ten. An ordinance submitting section fifty-two dash thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Todaya, Missouri regarding preliminary plat filing fees.
Second reading?
Second.
Aye.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash one ten. An ordinance submitting section fifty-two dash thirty-three of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Todaya, Missouri regarding preliminary plat filing fees.
Final passage?
Second.
Pro Paul, please.
Liz?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
Secretary of Law, this is Harley.
Okay, we have one new license for Brian Welpman doing business as Welpman Springs Brewing Company, five seventeen Hatchery Road, Stover, Missouri. It's for a special event, the Lions Club Zombie Crawl Downtown Todaya, October the sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And we have renewals for Paul Bennett doing business as George Whiteman, American Legion, twenty sixteen West Main Street for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Brody Barclage doing business as Casey's General Store, tenth at sixty-three, at nineteen oh nine West Main Street for a packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Terry Bates doing business as Casey's General Store at twenty-three forty-seven, sixteen oh one East Broadway Boulevard for a packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Angela Lee doing business as Casey's General at thirty-two fifty-seven, number, um, address thirty-fifty South Limit Avenue, packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Sherry Buckmore doing business as Casey's General, number sixteen oh one, at thirty, uh, five hundred West Sixteenth for a packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Christina Moore doing business as Casey's General Store, uh, ten fifty-two at seven sixteen West Sixteenth Street for a packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Charles Wong Sing doing business as Shea Win, one twenty-one East Third Liquor by the Drink. Honor Villa Lobos doing business as Katie's Barbecue Todaya, nineteen fifteen South Limit for Liquor by the Drink. And then, we have one more this evening. It was brought in, um, this week, and it didn't make the agenda, or last week late, didn't get on the agenda, but if, we need to do an extension on it this evening, because it will expire prior to our next meeting, but we'll just do an extension, and then we will actually list it on the next agenda for our, our, our second. And that's all I have.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
All good.
Aye.
Close?
Well, stereo going there.
Well, I do want to make a couple of comments on this. It's, uh, Saturday, it's been Saturday, we want to put in the fire. This is, uh, hoping of the trade, last one, we feel that is, because it's all the, the more, training house, the training, the people, the callers, training, everything, the training.
Kelvin and I got to ride in it, it was a very smooth ride, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Kelvin and I both did, yeah.
I was, I was really surprised to have smooth-
It was a really nice, yeah.
Yeah. I did ask what the load limit was before. Yeah.
Yeah, and yesterday, you guys, you go to-
No.
No, we went with the, with the ribbon cutting, yeah. It was more cramped for us than anything. Even I had to bring my knees to my chest a little bit, and I'm the little guy.
I think they did, they did ride at a hundred five, seven, and, and the splash pad is, or have you been to other parks?
Did you have the park, um, yeah. The weather is cooperating, and they're getting a lot of things done. Um, the one old concession stand is completely gone. It looks like, because they're putting down, the concrete pads, the wooden blocks that have to go down for the concrete before, looks like they're putting those in, uh, they've been over there and working on.
Are, are all concession stands coming down?
No, just the old one that used to be, the swimming pool concession stand, it was blue. Um, they're taking, removing it and re, rebuilding, uh, and it'll be another set of bathrooms, and also, it'll hot, it'll house all of the water parks for the splash pads.
Good. That other one was designed by a really brilliant person. Who was it?
Helen.
She, she might know this, uh, Bob Sock and Bliss, you should know them.
See, he's, he's gonna work that in. We'll talk about that in close.
Oh, I said, I said, we had, Council Bliss and, uh, front of the city.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, finished city. Barney, finished it. Proper intersection we've worked, we've worked that out, done enough work to do it, and it looks very, looks like it's perfect.
Well, Barney gets all credit. He's a great guy.
The only thing.
Mom, mom.
Our, our check, you know, our man, this, this right there, and he came over and says it was. And so here is, Council of Bliss backing it, and it was just raining, and here is our man walked over, you know, high dressed for speaking. He fixed that. Thank you. It goes down, and that muddy water was entirely.
Where is, where, I was, oh, there, okay.
So, or Barney just turned around and went home.
I felt you. I didn't mean to.
Anybody else?
Getting ready for the state fair. Got several of our cramming stuff still going, uh, getting ready for that.
Anybody else?
I should say, stay tuned.
I can leave the, uh, what's going on with the bricks in the street being busted? I mean, is this wearing it?
On Main Street. Yeah, that, um, I, I think that was the first, um, first section of, uh, the street case.
Oh, right.
And I think the, they were, it was not engineered correctly. Um, the, uh, it was engineered with sand underneath it and, as opposed to a, um, a stronger base. And so then the, uh, the weight of the vehicles going by, plus Main Street gets more truck traffic than, than Ohio does. Um, what we are trying to get accomplished there is just to take those out and put it back in with stamped concrete. So it'll be concrete that will basically die and, uh, and mold it to look like it's brick, so that it'll match the street case. If you'll look at the, um, basically Pacific Street in Ohio, um, where we did that in front of Wayne, that's really what we're trying to accomplish there. So it'll, it'll look very similar to that, but it'll hold up a whole lot better. But, close.
And I know it's just those families all along, and I should, kind of feel. I was just hoping yesterday, um, Barbara, they had the same, these are also fit. On college, they had, we, they had a beta, uh, pedestrian, uh, cross, uh, they did a really big deal with the new product. For the, it's, 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 it's been a terrible pattern.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to subsections one and two of the revised statutes of Missouri of six-ten point zero two-one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lehman?
Still here.
Oldham?
I'm here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Here.
And Liz?
Here.
This conference will now be recorded.
It's bad in here.
Good.
Wrong.
Ready?
Yeah. Motion to, close. Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
I don't think we have to do the, unless you want to.